I will give up.
You ready? We're gonna call a meeting back to order. Hey, hey. At this time now, everybody who signed in, one at a time, you're gonna swear you in. You're gonna get five minutes to clap your hands up here. Okay, so you're gonna get five minutes to, you know, make your statement. There'll be no questions directed to the applicant. If the applicant wants, the applicant can answer you afterward. You know?
This is not the time for questions.
Yeah.
Not for statements.
Okay? What?
Yeah, this is the time for statements. It's not the time for questions. This is your time to make statements either for or against the application or anything that seems to be relevant to you, like the board said.
And there'll be no clapping or applause, okay? This isn't a movie or a plot. This is a hearing. Okay?
They can't hear you. Is it possible for you to turn your microphone on so that we can hear what you're saying?
He's not gonna be testifying anyway, so it's okay.
We're so frustrated, we see your lips moving and not hearing you. Please speak up.
Okay, first person who signed in is Father Jerry.
Can't hear you. The system's not functioning properly.
Father Jerry heard me and he's walking up here.
How do you know that? Ask him.
You're crossing the line. Sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is true?
I do. I do.
All right, thank you if you could just say so for the record your name, please.
Father Jerry Jacob from the Mullincar Archdiocese at 236 Old Tapan Road in Old Tapan, New Jersey.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm here representing the Mullincar Archdiocese. The archdiocese, which is located right across the street, which is the church that you see used to be the Korean church. The archdiocese does own this property and it encompasses the archdiocese cathedral, the chapel, the administrative offices of the archdiocese, the private residence of the Archbishop, who is his eminence more Titus Siro. As you all know, we have holy mass here scheduled every Sunday, days of the holy, other days during the week. We have daily prayer services during the week and other days during the church's ecclesiastical calendar as well. We chose this property due to its natural background, the beauty of the property. We had a lot of greenery behind it, which we didn't have at our last property. The property was blessed in May 2021 by His Holiness the Patriarch of the, who was the Supreme Head of the Universal Seric Orthodox Church. Basically, we're here, the church cathedral is considered a sacred ground. Now that it has been consecrated, it is considered a sacred ground and what's around it. We are here strongly objecting to the application that is put forth by CSH Old Tapan LLC. One, we have several concerns. Number one is that there would be substantial noise that would result from increased traffic, from residents at the proposed site, visitors, deliveries, general HVAC system, employees, supplies, ambulances and other emergency vehicles and garbage pickup. Number two, another concern we had was the noise pollution will disrupt our mass at the cathedral and the chapel, which, as I mentioned, occurs every Sunday, other days during the week. We have daily prayer services as well. The construction on the site could potentially take years to complete and the noise and the debris generated from this will extremely disrupt the services at the cathedral and the chapel. There is also not sufficient buffer between our property line where the construction is planned. In addition, once completed, the property would be probably massively out of scale on this really small lap. The proposed building, it doesn't have dedicated emergency lanes for emergency as far as I know. A particular concern that we do have is the proposed property will likely cause increased flooding due to the huge loss of the trees adjacent to the wetlands in the site. And this flooding, it could go directly into the church property itself. Our property already faces flooding during heavy rainfall and this new structure, it will cause more water to flow into the church property as the proposed structure 244 Old Tapan Road is, would probably at a higher incline. We're also concerned about a danger that would be caused to the retaining walls of the church property on that side of the property, that we do have retaining walls. We're also concerned about that being damaged. There will be substantial degradation of the surrounding wetlands. The construction activities will result in direct habitat loss for wildlife, in addition to suspended solids in the water and modification of water levels and flow regimes. Also, we're concerned about the trees, over 200 trees on the property that may be over 100, I mean 700 years old. The 2016 Old Tapan master, the master plan, it states that, that the borough should continue its historic valuable stewardship of the Lake Tapan reservoir and its watershed and have further called the area a high priority for preservation. Building an assisted living facility on this property, it contradicts this master plan that Old Tapan put together. And in addition, preserving this green area should be a priority for the planning board, especially in light of all the new construction that is currently happening in Old Tapan. The scope of the proposed development will also lead to a considerable green space in the borough. There's a loss of that 271-year-old building that we were talking about as well. And due to the incline, the nature of the property, the sign line for the church will be changed due to the new three-story structure. The applicant has stated the property is the same height of the church, however, due to the incline, the new building will appear substantially taller than the church. In addition, we have concerns of the view the potential residents of this assisted living facility would have into our cathedral. Would they be looking into our altars, the Archbishop's private quarters, et cetera? So, per the government planning board minutes, the applicant claims that this project will be inherently beneficial to the borough. However, we believe that preserving this as a park or a nature preserve would be just as if not more to the community. So, while the applicant has attempted to address some of those issues, the efforts do fall far short of what is minimally satisfactory to all of us.
Hello again, everyone.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is proceeding?
The other right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is proceeding?
Yes.
And could you give us your name and address, please?
Francesca Costa, Closter, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I have a visual. Can I please pass this so that you can pass it around? It's an 1830 census record. It's Garrett Herring's son and it proves that there is need for archaeological survey.
Objection, this is coming in. It has handwritten notes on it. I haven't been provided and I don't have my objections down. Okay?
And although there's slave is listed on this.
Okay.
You let this process take a statement.
Yeah. Most of the print is blurry and a lot of it across the top and this, you know, it purports to have a lot of history, I guess, dates on it, but I have no idea what the relevance is on it. I don't know how this witness could be.
Well, I think we could just allow some liberality we can give to the board secretary. She can keep it in the file.
Yeah.
And if you need, if you require that, it's just through ancestry.com. I can provide screenshots of it, but unfortunately it's from 1830, so it's a little bit blurry. All right. I'm gonna jump when that thing goes off. I'm sorry. My name is Francesca Costa and I'm a resident of Closter, New Jersey, your sister town. Although I do not live within Old Tapan, I celebrate your town's victories and mourn her defeats in the same way I would my own neck of the woods, unless it's about high school football. We are all part of the same weatherways, same local environment and share our history and heritage as part of Harrington Township. I urge you not to approve the current project at 244 Old Tapan Road. In addition, I urge you to sit down and really consider what price you will pay down the road if you do not set aside specific land for storm flood absorption and public recreation. What cultural value are we destroying? By the engineer report, without trees, more than three times the amount of water would overwhelm one of the highest points in your town. Water always travels downwards. Could your roads, first responder centers or homes cope with the water change? Your fire department and borough hall are downstream from this site. I would never want to see these public services incapacitated during a flood at the very time they proved to be invaluable. Mount top removal is the term used to describe the development plans that are in store for a property so close to you. I have a master's degree in archaeology, history of the phasics, and I can assure you that this will change the landscape of your community forever and will cost millions to revert. The damage would have been done. Thousands of years from now, they will be able to date exactly when this soil of rock was moved and history will show who approved it. This company is extracting resources from your town and once the well dries up, will leave your town with no lost sleep. Do you think this company will exist in 50 years, 100? Some trees they threaten to kill are older than that and the house is older still. Garrett Young Herring built this house in 1750, give or take a decade, with a handful of neighbors and friends. His son Frederick was born in 1762 and both men witnessed the revolution on their doorstep. Long before Old Tapan was a town, it was the center of a conflict deciding the very heart of who America is. In Old Tapan, enslaved and free black people lived alongside Dutch farmers subsisting on the same soil in vastly different conditions of life. This is Old Tapan's enduring legacy. Yes, there are horrors in the past, but it would be unconscionable to shrink away from them. I hope I am mistaken, but I have found some record to indicate Frederick Garrett Herring had a slave and trees on that rat now centuries old could have been planted by those very hands. At most meetings, every professional brought before the board has been asked if an archaeological survey will be conducted. They have all said no. We risk losing any chance to find archaeological traces of your founders, both free and enslaved. Every day across this country, we lose priceless archaeology to the bulldozer. It is my professional belief that this cultural history is an inherent benefit to your town, as it is to all Harrington Township's sister town. Your town deserves the safety of a watershed actively absorbing floodwaters and its people deserve a place to go and enrich their own neighborhoods. A park would be a wonderful way to let the next generation of Old Tapan residents be inspired about the rich history and ecology around them, while money is a major issue when making any decision. Towns like Closter, Anderson, Oredell and Englewood all benefit immensely from their local forests and watersheds. Money is one of the most short-sighted issues a town can face and through your and your municipality's dedicated work, you succeed at keeping your budget balanced and ensuring the town has all it needs to keep running. But preserving a forest and historic house is one of the most long-term investments one can make and now that priceless decision is entrusted to your planning board, as it was to generations of Old Tapan's predecessors. Many of you remember fondly back to when your town was rural. No developer can know the value of Harrington Township farm soil they steamroll over. This land is residential and this house is historic. I've spoken to the state and county, both recommending the town seek to purchase this land via grants and green space funding. As we near the 250th anniversary of the revolution, witness houses and properties untouched by development are able to apply for national grants which support renovations and preservation. If a house is moved, it loses these privileges and its position on the sword list. As a professional historian and amateur tree hunter, I highly recommend this land be invested in rather than treated as a sacrifice already lost. Your grandchildren and their grandchildren will thank you for your wisdom in knowing you shaped the next chapter of Old Tapan history. I thank the citizens of Old Tapan for appearing tonight. Whether they sit on your planning board or within this crowd, you are unlocking history.
Thank you.
Melissa Inghala. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is proceeding?
I do.
And for the record, state your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Sure. My name is Dr. Melissa Inghala. Last name is spelled I-N-G-A-L-A and my address is 380 15th Street, Norwood.
Thank you.
So, I'm a professional biologist. I'm not a resident of Old Tapan, but I am a resident of your neighboring town in Norwood and a lifelong resident of the state of New Jersey. As a professional biologist and assistant professor, I have studied the impacts of habitat fragmentation and habitat loss on wildlife, both in the tropics and temperate regions like where we live. Something I've come across in my research is that this notion that small habitat patches like the property at 244 Old Tapan Road cannot serve as usable wildlife habitat because they're too small is actually incorrect. These small habitat patches are really important to supporting local biodiversity and in fact, a 2019 paper published in the proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences showed as much, indicating that even habitat areas of low ecological quality that are already impacted by pollution, runoff, the kinds of things that we would find in this suburban environment, do not affect their ability to host diverse plant and animal species, sometimes hosting up to 150 different bird species and threatened plants. Given its status as a wetland and its proximity to Lake Tapan, there is good reason to believe that even though this property is only five and a half acres, it could be serving this function for our local fauna. Professionally, I'm a bat biologist and so two of the species that come to mind when I think about this property are the Indiana Bat, which is federally listed as an endangered species and the Tricolored Bat, both of which are known from this area. The Tricolored Bat was recently proposed by the state to become a threatened mammal in September of 2022. In the wintertime, these bats roost elsewhere, but in the summertime, properties like 244 Old Tapan Road and the mature trees that they host are important roost sites for these animals. And while bats may not seem like a priority to the municipality of Old Tapan, their loss from the landscape could have important knock-on consequences, such as an increase in the number of biting insects that you have to suffer in your backyards every summer. Without knowing anything about the animals and plants that call 244 Old Tapan home, it is impossible to guarantee that the conversion of this property would not adversely impact them and have those knock-on consequences for the residents of the town. Given the other concerns about the hydrology changes to this region, how it would impact the wetlands, I, as a professional scientist, cannot say that this is a net benefit for the town of Old Tapan without at least some further consideration of the wildlife. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Song. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is proceeding?
Yeah.
And for the record, state your full name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Caitlin Song, S-O-N-G, 56 Munder Drive, Old Tapan.
Gonna have to speak up.
So, I'm currently a sophomore at Northern Valley Regional High School and I went to TBD and CDW while I was living here. So, I have right now 300-plus signatures from students and teachers from NBOT, teachers from CDW and TBD, and I also have signatures from students from Bergen County Technical Schools, Bergen Tech. And on their behalf, I'm talking about how they express concern about the wetlands preservation and like the general.
Miss Song, I'm gonna have to stop you right there. You can give that petition to the board secretary. It can be filed, but I'm just gonna read, this is not me talking about this. New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration, it's section 18-4.5 into 2022 addition, often a board receives letters of objection or petitions from members of the public for or against the proposed variance. Such documents are not admissible, although of course, the writer of a letter or signer of petition may appear and testify. Where the writer or signer is not available for cross-examination, however, such documents should not be received into evidence by the board. Then several cases were cited, one of which the court noted that the fact that the board placed in evidence a petition opposing an application was one indicated that the board considered the wrong things in denying the variance. But you can give it to Diane and she'll place it in the board's files. Thank you.
Anyway, so they were expressing their concerns about wanting to preserve the location.
We understand that. Thank you very much. Oh, it's your fault?
Anyway.
Why don't you continue, but you can't talk about what other people think.
Okay.
You can tell us what you think, but not what other people.
Okay, so as the youth, I'm part of the future. If like these 200-plus trees are being cut down, then obviously that will have a large environmental impact as well as like the chance, the increased chances of like flooding and traffic and light pollution and noise pollution that happens. Like when I'm going to school, there's already like really bad traffic and I can't imagine how much worse it'll be if this construction happens. In addition, I brought up this issue on a December 8 meeting to the New Jersey Historical Commission and I wanted to add that they also expressed their concerns about it, but for what it's worth.
I'm gonna have the same objection.
You're getting it to hearsay what other people would say.
Sorry.
Tell us what you think.
So, I think that as someone who's probably gonna continue living here for years, I really don't want to see this town like lose its historical value and like this will have like a really large environmental impact and so I think in the long term, it'll have more negative impact than like positive impact. Like in hindsight, I'm not sure that this plan will actually like this, if building this will actually have a benefit to the town. So, I suggest to consider like the future generations before making a decision as to whether or not to go through with this application. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker would be Jennifer Anice, A-N-N-E-S. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is proceeding?
Yep, I do.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name.
Jennifer Anice, 24 Lakeview Drive.
Thank you.
So, I am directly behind ground zero of this and I, as a teacher in a nearby closer town, I teach environmental awareness and how am I supposed to go back to my students and say, well, the very members that we elected to protect us are the ones that destroyed our open space? I can't, I don't understand why the town has to agree to this proposed buffer variance, buffer zone variance reduction. Why does, when it's supposed to be 60, but they want 47? Why roll back a grand variance for rules that are already in place to protect our residential area? I do not want to view an 81,000 square foot structure in what's supposed to be an 8,000 square foot lot from my kitchen window. I moved to Old Tapan for its beauty. I moved to Old Tapan for its open space. I grew up in Westwood. I know what this surrounding area is like. I did not move here to see constant commercial building. I would have moved to Englewood or Hackensack if that's what I wanted. I moved to Old Tapan. The removal of the trees disrupt drainage and I implore the members of the board to consider this happening in your backyard. I implore everybody to take a moment and think about this structure being built directly in your backyard and if, I'm sorry, one second. It would be too extreme for this town to just simply vote yes because it seems, no offense, like this woman runs the show. And I also find it disgusting how condescending some of your board members are to the public. I really do. It's embarrassing as an educator to see how disrespectful some of you are to the public, regardless of how the public's acting, because the public does not, is not versed in your rhetoric on an everyday basis. We don't know off the cuff of our sleeves what the procedures are and you're rolling your eyes and that's fine, because you're one of the ones I find to be incredibly condescending.
Talking to me?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Exactly. Looking at you, talking to you.
I don't think we need personal criticism.
I thought this was my time to share how I feel, when I feel that the board is disrespectful.
You're probably wasting your time.
Oh, no. I said what I needed to say. Thank you for interrupting me.
You're welcome. Mary Walsh.
Whatever it is.
Mary Walsh. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving is proceeding?
I do.
And for the record, state your full name and spell your last name and give us your address, please.
Mary W A L S H Conservation Chair, North Jersey Sierra Club, 64 Davis Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My comments will focus on three aspects. Nature, the master plan, and finally, the site plan. To begin, I'd like to reference something that the Christoffers say. It's better to light one candle than to curse the darkness. The property with all the trees at 244 is one candle and the huge amount of pollution produced by the number of cars that are already traversing Old Tapan Road. Everything in nature is connected in the most beneficial way. If we look at the enclave, we see what happens when there is no care given to consider what trees actually do. We know that 200 trees on the property at 244 are doing the crucial activity of removing pollution from the air. According to the Arbor Day Foundation, a mature tree will absorb more than 48 pounds of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere in one year. Almost five tons that doesn't have to be inhaled by the residents of Old Tapan. The next part of my comments involves the master plan. This development is in direct contradiction to the environmental and historical elements of the master plan. I quote from Goal Two. I quote from Goal 2: "The borough seeks to encourage development that preserves Old Tapan's sensitive environmental features, including floodway and floodplains, groundwater recharge areas, wetlands and their associated buffers, wellhead protection areas, steep slopes, and environments supporting rare, threatened, or endangered species," and you do have threatened species there. I'm gonna speed up to Goal 2, because I'm not, I think I don't have enough time. Goal 6: "To preserve the historic features of the borough. Policy statement: Old Tapan recognizes the historic features that recognizes its historic features continue to be an integral part of the community's unique character. Old Tapan seeks to maintain and protect its historically significant structures and sites from adverse impacts created by development proposals, whether they be public or private." Goal 9: "To discourage the creation of flag lots or subdivisions of property that create new or disruptive developmental patterns, contrary and to the detriment of existing residential development patterns in the borough. You may be wondering why I'm reading these, because according to New Jersey statutes annotated 40:27-4, "In order to maximize the degree of coordination between municipal and county plans and official maps, the county planning board shall be notified in regard to the adoption or amendment of any municipal master plan, official map, or ordinance under the municipal planned unit development," and quote, "A copy of any such proposed plan, map, or amendment shall be forwarded to the county planning board for review and report at least 20 days prior to the date of public hearing therein." So by approving this development, you are changing the master plan, so you must hold a public meeting, a public hearing, and submit the amended plan to the county at least 20 days before that hearing. My third point about the site plan, there are still some minor errors, but I trust that you will overcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Ardito. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se in Shelby's office, God?
I do.
And you give us your name and address, please, and spell your last name.
Peter Ardito, A-R-D-I-T-O, 57 Glen Avenue East in Harrington Park.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members, I have been a member of the Harrington Park Planning Board for more than 10 years and vice chair for the last four years. I understand firsthand the complexity of the decision you have before you concerning this application for 244 Old Tapan Road. I have also, I have in the past worked with Ms. Price and have great respect for her, but I am here to explain to you why you should vote no on this application. The planning board needs to answer the overriding question: Would this applicant's project be of inherent benefit to the community, more so than following the recommendations of your current master plan, which are: Preserve open space in the central district. Do not rezone residential to commercial. Consider stormwater management concerns and steep slopes of over 15%. Protect the habitat of threatened species. Preserve the historic house. On every count, the answer is no. This application is not of inherent benefit for the town. When it comes to the historic house, your last three master plans specifically have said, if the opportunity came about to save it and preserve it and make that into a park, you should do that. So it's disappointing that your mayor and council seemingly have not acted on that in the past. All New Jersey residents should have easy access to open space. Open space and parks are essential to quality of life in New Jersey. Open space preservation protects water resources, cultivates biodiversity, and fulfills the recreational needs of the local residents. There is another location in Old Tapan that is in proximity to 244's plot, and that was already zoned for commercial use. It has almost no trees on it. It was recently approved under Planning Board for the same type of development in the past. It would fit the overall needs of CSH that has, they have requested for 244, and that would not be, serves negative impact on the environment of Old Tapan. Preserving 244 simply follows the borough's master plan. The master plan reviewed and submitted to the mayor and council by you, the planning board of Old Tapan. In three consecutive master plans, 244 was specifically noted for preservation for the good of the town, its citizens, and the environment. If you approve this application, you are saying that your master plan is not meaningful and that its recommendations carry little weight. If you approve this application, you are throwing aside logic that says there is a reason why some areas are zoned residential and others commercial. Everything in my experience as a member of my planning board tells me that CSH has another, much better location to build in town that is proper and should receive easy approval, and that building at 244 location would definitely not be in the interest of the town, would not be inherently beneficial to Old Tapan's citizens, and that their application should, in fact, be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Wusher. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se in Shelby's office, God?
I do.
Would you state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address?
Carl Wusher, W-U-S-C-H-E-R, 96 Harrington Drive, Old Tapan, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I was thinking about what I heard from the ambulance corps, but we never got a chance to read at the last meeting. Is that?
Is this authored by the ambulance corps?
Yes.
And you remember the ambulance corps?
Yes.
Has the corps approved the sending of that?
Yes, it was distributed to you at the last meeting.
Then I think you can read it if you want to.
I'll do one, and then I gotta do a little bit for myself as a member of the town.
Okay, well, go ahead.
I'll be quick about it. Dear Chairman, Chairman and the members of the planning board, the purpose of this law is to request that the members of the Old Tapan planning board make the condition of 244 Old Tapan, where the application requires that the facility provides for their own private ambulance service for their residents 24/7 for both emergency and non-emergency incidents. In addition, we are also requesting that a requirement of the application include a contingency plan for a 244 Old Tapan Road resident in need of transport or emergency medical care when the dedicated private ambulance services are ready committed to another facility resident. The Old Tapan Ambulance Corps cannot guarantee the manpower to be able to support the jump in calls that 100 bed assisted living facility would run to the town. In 2021, the Old Tapan First Aid Corps responded to 520 calls. Of those 520 calls, almost half, 47%, were for patients on the age of 69. The number of calls that were for patients over the age of 69 has been slowly increasing over the past four years, with a 21% increase in 2021 versus 2028, 2018. And this number will continue to grow. Mr. McElroy stated at the February 1st, 2020 planning board meeting that he expects approximately 200,000 calls per week at the assisted living facility and that he believes one of the, believes as a particular site is that as an EMS community in our building, corner from the site. Expectations that the Old Tapan First Aid Corps volunteer manpower could handle a volume jump of 20% in one year is unfair, unreasonable, and powerful. But Washington Township and Maugham. When all of our mutual aid partners cannot complete an ambulance crew for their own town, and Old Tapan can't complete a crew, we help our neighbors by sending our ambulance. In reciprocation, what an Old Tapan region requires an ambulance in the Old Tapan does not have the manpower to start the whole ambulance. The mutual aid town will respond available. When an ambulance takes itself out of the town to assist a nearby town, they're taking a chance that the resident of our own town might not get an ambulance service if needed. In addition, the hard-working assisted living corps failure is increasing this chance for the residents of our mutual aid partners as well as Old Tapan. Despite the desire that our hard-working members to provide maintenance and medical care for everyone in our community, the reality is that volunteerism across our neighborhood communities is on the decline, while call volume continues to rise. Although our volunteer corps requires the operation of our corps, it is our volunteers that are needed to sustain us as an organization. We can't stand that continuing to increase the workload of the volunteers will lead to down in the decline in membership and the number of residents being deprived of compassionate free emergency medical care that they have come to expect from the Old Tapan First Aid Corps. Thank you for considering my request, respectively, the captain and president of the ambulance corps.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Now, I'd like to speak on myself. I've been a longtime resident. My family built their house on Henningside back in '53. We were here when the high school was just started, when it was mostly farms back then. I've seen sanding become housing. I've seen practice halls being built, practice hall coming down to the enclave, which is really, to be honest, not all that attractive looking compared to the rest of the town. I've seen what's happening across from the high school, and this application is being used, especially during the last one by Uta Porter, that it was a beneficial use. It may be a beneficial use for people that are in the town. And also, as a member of the ambulance corps, I've been to other towns. There's a lot of people where their parents live with them. They can't afford a place of that expense to put their parents. And a lot of parents dread wanting to go to a place like that. They do it usually for a short period of time. They're not there from year upon year. My dad died in his house. My grandpa died in the house. The three of them built it with my uncle. My mom died in the house because she didn't want to go somewhere. That's, if you, if you ask the people here, they would try to want to stay where they are. And seeing some place built like that when it's always here, I just, you know, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Jill Lawrence. Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se in Shelby's office, God?
I do. Forgive me in advance. I'm nervous.
That's okay. Don't be nervous. Just state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
My name is Jill Lawrence, L-A-W-R-E-M-C-E. I'm a resident of Leonard Drive, which is directly across from where the property is proposed to be built. I've lived here since 2001 with my family. My husband, whose mother still lives on our street in her own home, has been here since 1959. I am concerned, very concerned about the environmental impact, not just on the property, but to the residents who are living within the immediate area. I work from home. My husband works from home. We are both always sitting in our front windows, and we see the children and the residents all day long, walking dogs, riding bikes, on skateboards and scooters in the summertime. That's a very big concern. In the 21 years that I've been living in town, we have never had a flood in our home, nor have any of my immediate neighbors that I have spoken with who have concerns about the property being built. And that is a big concern for us at this time, that if we have stormwater running down, as we've had with hurricanes and other big storms, that it will end up in our homes as opposed to down our storm drains. I'm worried about the size of the structure that is being proposed from our residential neighborhood. There are a lot of structures that have been built recently, structures such as this in other towns that have been built. I'm from Wood Cliff Lake. There are sunrise assistance living homes, as well as other residences of this nature in Wood Cliff Lake, but they are not in people's immediate neighborhoods, where they're worried about children and families blocking the neighborhood, or even traffic that's going to affect the residents. Somebody mentioned the site across from Oaks Park. I'm not sure if that's an option, but that is across from a bank. Already a parked structure. Might be better to consider something like that for a building like this, excuse me, instead of somewhere that's near a residential neighborhood and an elementary and middle school. I do also want to address that I had a conversation with somebody who's sitting on this panel currently, back in August, saying that this is pretty much a done deal. My hope is that all of you sitting here are giving everyone the respect to listen to what we have to say, and that you have not already made up your minds in your conversations with the people who are building this structure. Our town has changed dramatically in the 21 years that I have been living here, and not all of it is progress, as the mayor said in his letter to one of the residents. This is not benefiting our town in any capacity, the residents of our town. We don't even have a supermarket in this town. Maybe you should consider working on that before putting...
...to vote. It was the 28 boroughs that were the first to organize in Bergen County. Of the 28 voters to organize, eight of those signatures were Harrying family signatures. These are the original. This is from the 100th anniversary of Old Tapan, the sandstone houses of the Harrying families. And there are eight of the houses. And there are eight of the Harring family's sandstone houses that are documented in Old Topan Historic Society. So they are significant. The Harring families were important and prominent people in Old Topan today. Sons Cossing Harring held four hundred sixty-nine acres of Old Topan property. Frederick Harring's house is on DeWolff Road, still standing today. He was a member of the Eckert Company Regiment of the Militia, and his sons, one of which is Garrett Harring, from two forty-four Old Topan Road, fought in the Revolutionary War. These buildings, according to the Northern Valley Press, there's an article here, Doc in Time, and this is Garrett's original building, stated, "Some Northern Valley towns are graced with stately homes and buildings dating back to the eighteenth century. From the Baylor massacre site on the Riverdale border to our east, west, sorry, growing down Old Topan Road to the Tappan, New York eastern border, we are the crossroads of history." It's my hope that the planning board will consider preserving the total five-and-a-half acre piece of property for its historic value, restore the house and property, potentially make it an Old Topan Historic Society building for visitors, our children, and future generations to learn about and preserve our rich history. My second invitation is about the environmental impact of this two forty-four Old Topan Road. The master plan has already been talked about, highlights its continuation to the historic high level of stewardship of the Lake Tappan reservoir and its watershed surrounding areas. Even a small forest serves as a habitat for a lot of living creatures and species, plus the two hundred six trees that are part of the three-and-a-half acres that are proposed to be cut down for this assisted living facility. I don't know if you've walked the property, I haven't walked the property, but I stood on...
I'm just gonna need to add the foundation footprints.
Did you indicate who took those photographs?
I took these photos on the church property border, and I asked the church permission to do so.
And how, how long ago did you take the photos?
The fall.
Okay.
So these were taken in the fall. The property is rich, vibrant, alive, and supporting all kinds of species in this area. The other proposal to show you is the limited green space on the Old Topan corridor. This is a drone picture of the site with the trees in the area and the Garrett property right here.
Yeah, could I just indicate how you obtained that?
Google.com.
Oh, a Google last picture.
Yes.
Okay, and when did, when did you do that?
Fall.
Okay.
So this is limited green space on the Old Topan corridor. This is a Google shot showing what this area looks like and the green space that we're trying to preserve. So, uh, where am I now? We could clean up this site, put on hiking trails within it, mark the trees, all the species, and not worry about losing the tree roots that soak up this rainfall, store it, and release amounts of extended rain over a period of time, serving as a natural protection for flooding. It's time to protect remaining parcels of open land in town, including this fragile pond ecosystem on this property. The property is walking distance from our schools. What a great history, environmental, and science field trip this could be, back and forth from TBD and CDW to this area. In closing, I've been a resident of this town since nineteen fifty-five. My parents bought property here, thinking it was heaven on earth. My mom, Alba Johnson, recently passed in January, restored and lived in the Epperson House for forty years on Old Topan Road. Stop paving and building paradise. Originally, the property planners were going to gift us two-and-a-half acres of the, of the western part of the wooded property. I just have three sentences left. Now the proposal includes, you know, moving the house across the street. And did you know that this house doesn't have regular mortar like we do today? It has hog hair, straw, mud, clay, holding it together, with a heavy stoned arched chimney that's structured inside it, made out of sandstone. Even the pond behind it has been cited in journals historically, saying that children that grew up in the seventeen hundreds would ice skate there and go into Garrett housing for entertainment and refreshments. Last picture is my backyard. This is what the three stories of Central Avenue looked like in my backyard. It was wooded, it was protected, and this is the three-story variance that this planning board voted on across from the high school, and this is now what I look at, and I hope that we don't have to look at this on Old Topan Road. I urge you to preserve the five point five acres, the pond, the seventeen sixty Dutch colonial, and open space, to preserve the rich heritage of Old Topan, which are the crossroads of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Gilliam. Forty-nine Ogilvy Road. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Forty-nine Ogilvy Road?
Yeah. Janice Gilliam. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give in this proceeding shall be self regarded?
I do.
Just state your name for the record, tell your last name.
Janice Gilliam, G.I.L.L.I.A.M. So I'm not gonna waste a lot of time, everyone's already said a lot of what I feel, that I'm against the planning board approving this for, you know, it's against the master plan, the extra strain on the ambulances, the added traffic, the overbuilding in Old Topan. But what I do want to say, I lived on Ogilvy, I'm on a slope, and kind of similar situation, it was almost five acres, zoned residential, stayed residential, developed all around me, trees cut down, and there are a lot of, there's so much wildlife, it's unbelievable. Oh, and it's also up the street from the reservoir, so little similarities, and the wildlife is so displaced that it winds up coming into the properties, does a lot of damage. There used to be an owl, the owl's gone. I noticed, you know, the water flow is different, even though, you know, it goes into the sewer systems, it goes into engineered retention basins, the natural trees, just the way it absorbs the water and the soil, it's, it does make a difference. And just in closing, one of you guys had said, you know, being presumptuous, if Old Topan wants the property, you know, as a resident and a taxpayer, I consider myself one of Old Topan and my family, and yes, we want to preserve the property intact, leave the house, do park, educational center, you know, just for, keep some green space in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Gambuti. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give in this proceeding shall be self regarded?
Yes.
For the record, state your full name, tell your last name.
Patrick Gambuti Jr., G.A.M.B.U.T.I., sixteen Autumn Lane, Old Topan. I'm gonna say something you guys probably know already, but for the benefit of myself and maybe the people here. So the question before the board today, does the inherent beneficial use of an assisted living facility outweigh the negative impact this project brings to the community and the site? That's where the SICA balancing test comes into play. In SICA versus Wall Planning Board in nineteen ninety-two, the New Jersey Supreme Court came up with this as a way to discern inherent beneficial use versus negative impact. The Silver Tsunami coming our way is a great marketing term, and it is a real issue, but do we really need another senior facility here in town? Besides Sunrise, there are many in the area within a reasonable drive that people from ours and surrounding towns could place their loved ones. On a quick internet search, I found twenty-one facilities close to us. Considering many of us in sandwich generation, keep our folks at home, that's a lot of options. The testimony by the planner was really good. He mentioned a lot of reasons why the facility could work, but I found one a bit off. It was the good neighbor bit. Yes, there were many changes made and offered that covered concerns of the board and some neighbors to the back of the property, but what about the folks to the west that was brought up but never addressed? What impact will this facility have on them? Is moving a historic house being a good neighbor? It is incredibly important part of our history. The chance of it being destroyed by the move is real, considering the type of construction that was done to build it. There was no historical expert to testify how this would be done, and the idea of it being destroyed was basically blown off, and with the applicant's attorney saying, things happen if it's destroyed while we tried our best. I was personally flabbergasted by that statement. That holds a treasure for this town, and I am still in bewilderment how the mayor and council would agree to this move. And what about the property itself? In Sunrise Development Inc. versus the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, the board argued that the facility would greatly exceed the permitted density and floor area ratio of the zone. Consequently, the board found that the property cannot accommodate the mass and scale of the proposed building. The board also found that there would be a negative impact on the existing landscape, and particularly on the existing mature trees on the property. In that case, Sunrise proposed to build a three-story building consisting of over eighty-two thousand square feet and eighty-nine units, holding one hundred beds on a four-and-a-half acre. Sound familiar? That board denied the application based on this and several other factors, and in the mentioned lawsuit, the board won. I also understand that there are ten units that, by far and next Colorado, that in the long run, considering all the development going on in town, especially the enclave that's gonna put so much pressure on that, does that number of ten really help us in any way? Regarding wetlands, the New Jersey Freshwater Wetland Protection Act, Rule seven colon seven eight dash two point two A two prohibits the drainage or disturbance of the water level or water table so as to alter the existing elevation of groundwater or surface water, regardless of the duration of such alteration, by subsection I, adding or impounding a sufficient quantity of stormwater or other water to modify the existing vegetation, values, or function of the wetland. How does the proposed drainage system comply with this NJDEP rule? Rhetorical question. The engineer for the applicant has stated that his plan will do a better job of serving the wetland than the natural flow of the pot itself. I think about the engineering models of the Colorado River and see a disaster that's been happening for decades. With the changes afoot from our climate crisis, I find it hard to believe this design will accomplish what they propose. And I know that Tom, last time he was here, did, before he left that night, said he still has concerns about the drainage plan. I don't know what happened in the interim between that meeting and last, if something happened, but at that point in time, Tom was saying, you guys know about my concerns about the drains down the block. And what about the destruction of over two hundred trees? According to the National Wildlife Federation, trees improve air quality, improve water quality, and reduce flooding and erosion. Trees temper, climate, and trees create habitat for plants and animals. Those trees are incredibly important asset to the wetland there, and I don't think the engineer's plan sufficiently addresses those issues, other than saying it'll be better than it is. I don't believe that, and I don't know if you guys really do either. I've lived in a wetland area town, I live on Autumn Lane, which is by Doritaki's Run, and back from my property is way down below. So I've lived in a wetland area town for over thirty years. I've seen how changes in climate and development have changed that wetland. It's not a pretty picture. Can I finish two sentences?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The grassy state around the town where the sewers were put in by Doritaki's Run to deal with erosion issues has gone wild in my...
...federal and state registry. The site is a unique combination of wetlands and history, environmentally important to our ecosystem, and also Old Topan and American history. In fact, last week, Governor Murphy issued a mandate for twenty-five million dollars investment to preserve revolutionary war sites, not destroy them. This has to do with the quintessential coming up. The number one objection in all this is, this is the wrong project at the wrong location. It's the wrong project in the wrong location. Not this, this doesn't align with the master plan, and it fails in its inherent claim of inherent beneficial use. I know all the lingo, I've been at every meeting and beyond. This application isn't small or a temporary decision, it concerns the future and welfare of Old Topan, and it should be denied. It's specifically listed in the master plan to be preserved by the town for the inherent beneficial use of all townspeople and the entire community, all ages, all ethnicities, all religions, and all backgrounds. The master plan is a serious document that by law has to be reviewed, updated, approved every ten years by the mayor, by the council, by attorneys, at taxpayer expense. The preservation of the two forty-four property has been specifically noted in the last three master plans, ninety-six, two thousand six, two thousand sixteen, so why is the denial of this application even a question? Listed to be preserved for the inherent benefit use of the community, not for the beneficial use to a developer's commercial enterprise. They have not proven inherent beneficial use that warrants the planning board to override the master plan, to grant all these land use variances, which do not conform with Old Topan's municipality guidelines. We don't know how or why this slipped by the mayor and council's intention. In two thousand nineteen, two forty-four was foreclosed and for sale, bought by Premier Development for four hundred thousand dollars. I want to go on record to ask the planning board to deny this application, and please follow the master plan. This application, application is ill-suited to the property, and is based, it's based entirely on planning board approval. This is lies in your hands, you decide the fate. Then of course, we know where it goes, but you know what? I believe in God, and I believe the right thing should happen. I want to go on record, so the inherent, the inherent, the project does not adhere to preserving open recreational space. Again, approval by the planning board goes against the will of the people, as well as the master plan. So want to throw the master plan out? Who cares? We voted on it for thirty years. We don't care what the people of the town think either, but I think you do, and you live here, and we're your neighbors, and they want us to be their residents that put our parents in there. But I don't know if that's gonna go down that well, because the public isn't very happy about this. The project doesn't adhere to, sorry, briefly, traffic, some of the reasons, there's so many, I gotta talk really fast. This traffic, in the evening rush hour, hundreds of autos and cars and trucks from enclave, additional retail shopping. Traffic surgery, we feel, doesn't adequately account for all this increased traffic. We've even got twelve-month closure of West Old Topan Road that nobody's even talked about. So all the cars and trucks are all being detoured down Washington. Where are all these trucks and construction materials and flatbeds and equipment going to go? Washington Avenue was not built for that. Safety, there are so many kids coming piling out of the school, I see them every single day, they're all walking on, they're like my side of the sidewalk, I don't know why they're walking on the side of the sidewalk, because they got across the street, but they all come over here, it's cra, I took films of it, it's crazy. They all go to buy steak, and they all walk by, and they ride their bicycles, and people walk their dogs, so safety is a really big issue. Stress on the police and ambulance and fire departments, the police are the first, they have to be legally the first on the scene. The police are the first, they have to be legally the first on the scene. How many calls do they have to do? I've talked to some of the cops. I know we increased the police. But this is really hard. It's really taxing our services. And what if they're needed somewhere else? The volunteers for the ambulance and fire department, they're hard to find.
How much more do you have?
Uh, I'll make it really brief.
I will defer my five minutes to her.
Would you allow that, please?
Go ahead.
I mean, I've been here a long time. I'm going off the top of the script.
Take another minute.
Been here a really long time because I really care.
Take another minute.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir. The stress on the police and ambulance, fire department, they're all located that one street right across from where this is going to be built. I didn't even get into the mentioning of the widening of Old Pan Road, which right now that hasn't even been approved by the county, and that has to be approved. And I've checked on all that and OPR forms and know about that as well. I mean, they're asking so much. But are you going to allow all these accommodations for one commercial enterprise? You know, we already have an assisted living in town. We, we know how many calls, we hear the fire engines, this and that. There's also over 20 within a five-mile radius. It's, it's, they've gone crazy building them because it's such a big moneymaker in our area. With that being environmental issues, again, I look at it every single day. I look at that window, and it breaks my heart. The vernal pool is there. It's a natural basin. It is a vernal pool. I know they question it. We don't have documentation, the right time of year. I can't afford, I can't afford the lawyers and experts that CHS, CSH, Capital Senior Housing can afford. I can't afford Mrs. Price. But I'm sorry, I can't afford to bring in all these people, and where everything that's being done is really out of the heart and soul of people that care. And they're people just like you, and they're people like your children. That's how, that's what you teach your kids, how to grow up and to stand up for what they believe in and to do the right thing. So with the environment, the wetlands are going to get ruined and destroyed. It's the, come, I've said, come look. From my vantage point, I, again, it's a bird sanctuary. It has been for 25 years. I've had bald eagles. I've had almost every kind of bird you could think of. I've had bats, I've had owls. There's a whole big decrease in bird population across Brockland County and Burton County because wetlands are going on.
Could you wrap that up, please, because we have 19 other names?
I would say if you approve this application, you are telling citizens and businesses that you accept the paving over of Old Pan Road, an increasing suburban sprawl. Are you taking the quality of life into account for your development decisions? It's proven parks, trees, and recreation areas are highly rated, that more inherent beneficial use are more valuable. Allowing this type of commercial development opens Pandora's box, which is what the master plan prevents. Once a community experiences the negative impact, they're going to ask, "Why has this administration let the town down?" Please, in my opinion, the applicant has failed to prove the inherent beneficial benefit of this project and that the benefits outweigh the costs and risks.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for giving me extra time.
Share, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se shall be to a self-pity god?
Yes, I do.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Name is Ken Scarlatelli, S.C.A.R.L.A.T.E.L.L.I. My address is 507 Dorchester Road in Catonsville, Maryland. Now, why am I here all the way from Maryland? I was born and raised in Burton County, spent more than half my life here. I'm a professional conservation biologist. I hold certifications as a senior professional wetland scientist and a certified wildlife biologist. It was brought to my attention that this property, this application, is proposed in wooded area adjacent to what is potentially a vernal pool according to the New Jersey DDP. Now, why am I concerned about vernal pools? They're very rare and special habitats. There are 21 species of amphibians that breed in them in New Jersey. Seven of them can breed only in vernal pools. They're what we call obligate species. Now, if you remember, the reason they can breed only in vernal habitats is because they dry up during the year. There's no inlet or outlet, and there's no fish. And the fish prey upon, excuse me, the eggs and the larvae of the amphibians. So without the fish, they're, they're able to breed. But that's not the end of the story. As you remember from your basic biology, amphibians are born in the water, they spend their youth as tadpoles, and then they grow legs and lungs, and they hop out of the wetlands into the water, and they, they occupy the adjacent uplands for the rest of their lifecycle through the summer, the fall, and the, and the winter. Now, they require at least 200 or 300 feet of adjacent uplands to successfully complete their lifecycle. USC PA recommends 1,000 feet. So without the vegetated uplands adjacent to the vernal pool, they essentially cease to function as that important habitat. So what I would recommend and urge the board to do is to request that or require that the applicant hi, excuse me, hire qualified individuals to conduct a survey next spring according to New Jersey DDP protocols to determine whether or not this, this wetland is in fact a vernal habitat. And if it is, I would urge the, the board and the, the town, the borough to reject the application under the master plan or some other mechanism and instead improve a less intensive development if, if one is made, preserves the majority of the upland habitat. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Brooke Zelsner?
Oh, Brooke.
He left. Let's go. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se shall be to a self-pity god?
I do.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Patches Magaro, M.A.G.A.R.R.O., Fort Churchill Road, Old Pan.
Thank you.
Want to thank all of the volunteers that serve on our planning board. This is a long process, and usually you're here in a unknown and thankless capacity without an audience, so I appreciate the attention that you've given to this application. This project before us seeks to use a use variance, which is called a D variance. Courts have stated that a D variance will always be the exception rather than the rule. Because this development is for senior housing, it's considered an inherently beneficial use. As I understand that to mean, the applicant is given special consideration as a positive use. However, the applicant also has the burden to satisfy the planning board that the negative impacts of the project do not outweigh the good. I submit that the negative does outweigh the good. With regard to the second prong of the negative criteria, the variance should not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the plan and the zoning ordinance. So let's consider the zoning in Old Pan. A change in use would be considered when the property is particularly suitable for the proposed use, thus serving the general welfare of the municipality. But nothing could be further from the truth. This lot is particularly unsuitable for this development. This lot is residential and zoned for 8,000 square feet. The scope of the proposed building is 18,000 square feet, 10 times what is allowed in our zoning ordinance. Planning board is tasked as the fiduciary of our land. The zoning exists to utilize our entire portfolio of properties in a way that is... Since most of the borough's recreation lands are not centrally located, explore and pursue any opportunities that arise to obtain property suitable for recreation near the borough's central core. And goes on to specify, "One other such pursued property that has not yet been successful is the historic Garrett Herring House property." Once the natural land at 244 Old Pan Road is gone, it's lost forever. So the first step to explore and pursue this lot for recreational use would be to vote no on tearing it down for a commercial use. I urge the board to vote no. However, if one of the plans is considered, I would suggest the plan that the applicant submitted that gifted Old Pan a couple of acres of the natural unspoiled land so that it would remain undisturbed and residents could access it for recreation and education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Bager? Bager? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se shall be to a self-pity god?
I do.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Sure. My full name is Anna, A.N.N.A.F., Villa, V.I.L.L.A., B.A.G.E.R., Sixth Klein Court, Old Pan.
Thank you.
I, I can definitely empathize with each of you and the, the level of stress and responsibility that you have to maintain the integrity of these lands in our town. I am urging you to really, truly consider if this property were in your own backyard, if this property were viewed by you and played on by your children, and the thought of your grandchildren looking at this property in your own backyard. I want you to imagine that, and then imagine it not being there at all. Taking it personally in your vote, that's what I'm hoping and praying that each one of you will do. Take it personally. Be the custodians of what we as a community really desire in maintaining the integrity of this town. It's really, really important, and each one of you will be, your names will be etched in the history, in history of Old Pan as being responsible for whatever may come by the destruction of this land. So I urge you, please, to take it personally. Take it personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna, Joanna Bager?
I defer to everybody else because they have this, and it's so much better than I possibly could.
Okay, thank you. Susan Bauer? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se shall be to a self-pity god?
I do.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Susan Bauer, B.A.U.E.R., 35 DeBurg Drive.
Thank you.
I'll keep mine short and sweet. I haven't mastered my phone yet, so I'm using... But I'm, there's lots of people who can do that. I also want to thank everybody for their service to this town. I recently moved here from, a couple of years ago, from Queens, so you can imagine the shock. When I see those buildings across from the high school though, and I see them looking in other people's backyard, that's how I spent 40 years of my life. It's not pleasant, believe me. So I love this place. I'm thrilled that we were finally able to afford it, to be honest with you. I really moved here to be near my grandchildren, but that's besides. I do understand that development is not bad. It's not inherently bad. Things have to be developed. Things can never stay the exact way they are. But I am concerned, however, with the scope and magnitude of the current and planned projects and the impact they have on the borough. The character and the charm of Old Pan being changed certainly warrants concern, but more concerning is the impact these developments will have on the police, fire, and emergency services. The fire EMT and EMS department is currently in need of volunteers and answered almost 300 calls this year. It seems unfair to burden the residents who volunteer their time to provide us these services with even more calls. I would think it would be an extremely important factor in any decision regarding the, a zoning change request. In addition, lands such as 244 Old Pan Site once developed, it's lost forever. We're never getting it back. As stewards of the borough, I feel it's incumbent on the planning board to protect this land and set it aside for the use and the enjoyment of the residents of the borough. It is especially important to seize this opportunity prior to any changes made by the council for affordable housing. I'm inquiring the planning board to deny the request for zoning change and move forward with acquiring the public funds and grants necessary to protect this open space for the future. I do have to say, as I've been sitting here through different meetings and I hear testimony, some of it goes over my head. But when I hear the historian, when I hear the gentleman from EMS, when I hear the person who traveled from Maryland, I hope you're all taking this, I know you're all taking
Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se shall be to a self-pity god?
Yes.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Angelene Sheridan, S.H.E.R.I.D.A.N.
Thank you.
31 Edith Street.
Can I just note for the record that I believe Ms. Sheridan is represented by Mr. Stein.
I think the record reflects that.
Okay.
I think you should have the opportunity to speak.
Yes. I just wanted to...
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, I'm, I'm here obviously because I don't want this application approved by the planning board, and I thank you for your time. I know it's a lot of volunteer hours, and it's a very thankless job. And all I want to say is that I would hope that you do uphold the master plan. That was the main reason why I hired Dan. It was hard to find Dan. It was, it was really hard to find a land use lawyer that would represent the opposition. And I hired him because I thought you, you can use him to, to see different perspectives because what the applicant presents is obviously what the applicant wants you to know. So I, I hope you can extend to Dan the same respect you extend to Gail because I hired him for you guys, for the town who wants to see this place remain, you know, the small town character that it does have. I, I have two kids, 13 and 10. We've lived here for 15 years. I graduated from NBOT with my two brothers. My, you know, my parents lived here for 15 years. So I love this town. I mean, I could have moved to another place when I graduated, but we moved back here. So we all love Old Pan, and we want to keep it the way it is. Beautiful. It has a lot of open space. It has great schools. The volunteers are amazing, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Geraldine Hammer?
I'm good. I'm gonna yield my time.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's pleased with their side of it.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se shall be to a self-pity god?
Yes.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
My name is Sharon Coghlan. My last name is spelled C.O.U.G.H.L.I.N. I currently live in New Jersey. I grew up in Old Pan.
Okay, go ahead.
Graduated NBOT. I, I do not believe the developer has proven that we should change existing zoning laws from single-family residential to accommodate a request. The proposed project involves constructing a large commercial building on the site. It involves cutting old growth trees and paving almost the entire site. The proposed development of 244 Old Pan Road is not beneficial for many reasons. Significant changes would need to be made to the landscape of the site, including filling the vernal pool and flattening the hillside to accommodate the project. There are other sites in town more suitable for development. The site provides suitable habitat for species of special concern in New Jersey, which are species vulnerable to habitat changes. Open space is on the decline in New Jersey, particularly in Burton County. Access to open space has documented health benefits for local residents. It's valuable to try to preserve the open space when you can. The project removes 200 trees, many of them old growth, which are not common in New Jersey anymore. Latest scientific data documents that the oldest, biggest trees absorb and store more carbon in proportion to their size than young trees. Preserving mature trees plays a vital role in removing carbon dioxide from the atmosphere in addition to keeping the surrounding temperatures cool. Numerous articles document the critical roles trees play in creating climate change-resistant communities, which is something I believe the town needs to consider moving forward as we deal with... as we deal with climate changes. I believe the town board has a responsibility to follow Oldsapan's master plan. I would like to read a couple of excerpts from the 2006 and the 2016 master plan. Hopefully, I'm not repeating what other people have said. One of the goals of the Oldsapan's master plan was to provide for the quantity, quality, and availability of parks and open space, including adding, improving, and assuring proper distribution and accessibility for active and passive recreational facilities, neighborhood parks, and open space to protect environmentally sensitive areas. And last, I'd just like to read from the master plan, policy statement. Oldsapan has an established record of preserving open space as reflected in its recreation open space inventory. This is an important policy as the borough's remaining undeveloped areas are characterized by extreme environmental constraints and also embody critical watershed areas that is relied upon for water supply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Victor Pulsey? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se, shall be truthfully?
Victor Pulsey, twenty-eight Weyman Street, Piermont, New York. How's everybody doing? Retired, aren't you?
Just getting started.
In fact, I think it's been about six years since I was last here. Kind of, you know, place hasn't changed. It looks pretty good. But, you know what? As broken as the soul of wood, I will be short, but I'm not going to be too funny. You know, I look at every single one of you guys over here, and I know that I basically appointed probably the majority of you planning board members who are here. Obviously, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Weyman, obviously, you were hired by my administration, and I think I just wanted to come up and say that, you know, there's going to be a couple of things, and it'll probably be a little bit long-winded, but I will respect four minutes and seventeen seconds. You know, chair of my administration, we basically had a number of properties that were privately owned, which the town was able to purchase with open space funding. One of them was Washington Avenue Estates. The other one was the Beautiful Oaks Park, which everyone enjoys right now, concerts, et cetera. And the other one was Bottom Bell, which is pretty close to the Riverdale border. The point of that is that I know that as I'm looking at each and every one of you, for sixteen years that I was mayor, and I lived here for thirty-three years, along with Ed Gallagher, I was the longest-serving mayor, I know in your heart of hearts right now, as I'm looking at each and every one of you, you don't agree with this project. There's something about this project that you guys are looking at and you're saying to yourselves, it does not make sense. The road is too narrow to have this structure there. It's part, it was part of the historical preservation committee, which our administration had put together. I don't know when that was disbanded. It may have been during my administration and may have been afterwards, but that's academic. But I don't think it's a coincidence that over the last six years, and this has nothing to do with anybody over here, this town has changed. You know, we've gone from what I would call Oldsapan being a destination to right now it's become a triathlon. And I don't think that's good for property values. I don't think that's good for people who are living here. I don't think that's good for the fire department, the police department, the ambulance corps. This is all partly about money and coal, and I get it. And at the end of the day, I know, and every single one of you guys know, that if I was sitting in that corner, that I would look and I would speak and I would be talking to every single one of these residents, and I'd be telling you guys, you know what? Bring it on. I want a good fight, because that's why I hired you, because you're one of the best land use attorneys in Bergen County, okay? And you're still here. That means you're doing a great job. But there are people who will take this out, who are not afraid. This is historically significant also. Don't cheapen this town any more than what it's been cheapened over the past six years. It's too much. There's too much development which has been going on. You know it, and I know it, and obviously there are reasons for it. I'm not pretty too, because I haven't been there the past six years. I get it. But you guys are smart. You guys are articulate. You know what's going on here. You and your heart of hearts, and I want to thank you all for doing what you've been doing over the years. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your service, but help these people out here. These are the ones who are looking up at you and us when I was here and basically wanted someone to protect their assets. Thank you.
Brian Morandi?
Let's see. Last time I got former Mayor Poltsi, uh, signed a letter. Brian Morandi, 1043 Westwood Avenue.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se, shall be truthfully?
It's a statement, but it doesn't have to be true.
I have to swear.
Okay.
I'm not making this up. Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se, shall be truthfully?
Sure. Yeah, I do. Yes, I do. Hi. Brian Morandi, M-O-R-A-N-D-I, 1043 Westwood Avenue, Oldsapan, New Jersey. Not to make light of this, but this is like doing stand-up right after Seinfeld. Somebody in this house once said, that's wrong, bro. This is Oldsapan, okay? Now, I know the other communities you're dealing with, and it's got to be done right. Do you know who said that, Mr. Weyman? He said it. So I applaud what everybody else in this town is saying. It's got to be done right. You're going, jumping through hoops to approve a variance on something that doesn't have to be there.
The board hasn't approved anything.
Oh, okay. You're jumping through hoops to listen to this, but what?
We have.
Somebody's jumping through hoops. Somebody's asking for something, okay? It would be just easier if somebody bought the property and built the house. We get that. We get, we get that, right? I get, I get all this. Just because you can, doesn't mean you should. And that was written by a woman by the last name of Kenyon. It was a famous American writer, and what everybody has said here speaks to that. Just because you can. I came before this board twelve years ago, the zone board, to build a three-bed garage on my property. I had all the setbacks, I did everything. I didn't need a variance, anything, anything. One woman was asking, said, do you really need to build a three-bed? And I went back, talked to my architect who lived in town, Bob Segal, and I paid for it, said, can you do it for two? Can you give me two things? Why? Because just because I could, didn't mean I had to, and it wouldn't cost me any more money. So what I'm asking you, and what everybody here is asking, what former Mayor Poltsi asked you is, is look, we get dollars and cents. We get it off. But when you talk about beneficial, and people said, like, you know, no one's proven this beneficial interest or whatever, who really benefits from this? I live on, I live on Westwood Avenue. Cars drive sixty miles an hour down the road. I see that every day. I talk to the policemen. Their, their hands are tied. They're not being paid to sit there, watch people. True story, two pickup trucks are dry racing. I'm pulling starts at a lot, right past the park. I'm just asking you, I've got two minutes, I'll give them back to you, but from everything that everybody said, it resonates. This room, this thought, this process resonates. You asked the gentleman here, the attorney, well, have you thought about doing this? You asked the drainage guy, have you thought about that? Is anybody asked the applicant, have you thought about all these other places around town that you do? Why is what? I'm not asking you to answer that. What I'm saying is, why is it so hard for us to be on a path of least resistance, to be pushed back so far? Thank you very much.
Serena Lancia? Serena Lancia?
Joe Fernandez is going to take my spot.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se, shall be truthfully?
I do.
State your name and spell your last name and give us your address.
Joe Fernandez, F-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z, Ten Leonard Drive. Just for record, I have thirty-five years of construction and real estate development. I build buildings like this. Hello, I'm for me, because I'm usually on the side of the aisle presenting, get the building built. I'm here to talk about the impact of the area. This is a two-year project. It's going to be constant trucks in and out. By the grading plan presented by Dynamic, there's thirteen thousand cubic yards of soil coming off of this site. That's nine hundred and twenty trucks that are going to be lined up Oldsapan Road. We talked about the pinch point of Oldsapan Road. At its shallows, it's twenty-six feet wide. A tandem truck ranges anywhere from between twelve and fifteen feet wide. That's why it's a point. Anytime they're taking material off of that site, they're going to have to close down Oldsapan Road. It's going to impede across the second line. It's going to take up more than half of the road. That's one point of it. The other point is coming in. There's deliveries that are coming in. Concrete structure, going to have trucks lined up. Again, going to be across the center line. Anything that's delivered there is going to have to be closed down. It's going to impact police, fire, ambulance. Get into that. That's the point. I mean, school's right up the road, guys. Oldsapan has got a high school in it. It's got grammar school, middle school. Everybody's driving their kids to school or kids are driving to school. That area throughout the day is taxed. This is only going to do more. This project, as I said, is going to go two years. Supply chain, switchgear, transformers, they're all a year out. HVAC, twenty-four to twenty-eight weeks. That's what you're looking at. This is going to be an ongoing impact to this town, and it's not going to stop after it gets to a certain point. This is not different as in flow in a construction project, but it all means material, labor, and trucks. Where do you stage the trucks? They're going to be lined up either up Oldsapan Road, on Leonard, on Charles. Where are people going to park? Where are the workers going to park? They got to go somewhere. So this is all things, it's a logistic plan. I don't know if they presented a logistic plan, but this is something we're all going to have to live with. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Levine? Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se, shall be truthfully?
I do.
For the record state your full name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Catherine Levine, L-E-V-I-N-E, 3 Klein Court, Oldsapan. I'm going to be brief because everybody has pretty much said all the thoughts that I've had, but in following this gentleman, I keep coming back to the one thing, how does this benefit our town? Where is this a benefit for us? And everything that's been presented, the variances that have had to be, that will have to be waived, I don't see any benefit to the town. What I see as a benefit of a town would be a supermarket, would be more trees on the enclave, maybe having the enclave not look like army barracks. That would benefit the town, but I don't see we have an assisted living facility already. I don't see the need for another assisted living facility, especially when we have so many surrounding us. So it's all up, you're the keepers of our town. You're the people that make our town the success it is. It's in your hands. Do you do something that's going to benefit the residents or benefit, benefit some construction, some developer to make money and not service the town? And that's totally up to you. The other thing I want to point out and just have it stated for the record, there's this reference to two hundred trees being cut down. That's false. They have to, by our, I think it's our ordinance, it's an eight-inch caliber of the tree. Those trees are what they counted. I don't know if anybody else on the planning board walked the property with them. I served on the environmental commission in the nineties. I was there when the first open space thing was presented, and we passed the Washington State Open Space, the Washington Avenue Open Space. We walk the trees with the developer. It's, it can be a very subjective thing. Is it eight inches or is it seven inches? It can be, and it's very subjective. There's those two hundred trees, but there's trees that are six inches. There's trees that are seven inches, that are twenty feet high. The impact of the trees that are going to be cut are four hundred trees, maybe five hundred trees. It's not two hundred trees, not to mention all the brush. Because it seemed like a warm and fuzzy town. It was tree-lined. It was quaint. There was three schools here. It, it fit my, my family's needs, and I am watching it being destroyed. Again, as the keepers of our town, as the future, I'm concerned about our property values. I'm concerned about the safety issues of the change in traffic, what all these trucks are going to do, where the traffic is going to get rerouted down residential areas, where the children are going to be walk, all the children that walk to ByState after school to get a snack. They're going to be passing trucks and all kinds of debris or just inconveniences. The parents that go pick up the kids, the people that are going to work. Where's the benefit to the residents of this town? I don't see it. I don't see any benefit. What I do see as a benefit is making it a center. Make Oldsapan special again. Have it as a nature center, a historical center with all kinds of trails going back into the Vernal Pond, and something that the town will enjoy and treasure for every, ever. And I just hope, I'm hoping for a miracle here. I hope you can do that for us. I know you work hard, and I know you give a lot of time. I just hope you can make this happen for the town. Do something for us, not something for somebody that doesn't even live in our state. Thank you.
Lynn Lee? Lynn Lee? Lori Charkey?
Got to remove the duck bill.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given is per se, shall be truthfully?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
State your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Lori, L-O-R-I, Charkey, C-H-A-R-K-E-Y, 141 Demarest Avenue, Hillsdale, New Jersey.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for everything you do. This is grueling work. As a fellow volunteer, I understand it takes years. It's a very, very difficult decision that's weighing on you. I've been an open space advocate, a nature lover, a follower of history since I was knee-high to a grasshopper. I was brought up to love nature, to value historic sites. My parents schlepped us to every monument, every national park, east and west of the It was a wonderful education, and it's made me do what I've done, which is that since nineteen eighty-eight, I've been serving as the co-director and now director of Bergen Save the Watershed Action Network, Bergen Swan. A lot of you know that you have open space here because of our work, some that was preserved through legal settlements and some through your applying successfully to the open space trust fund. I sat on that board since the beginning. I was a founding member. I still serve on it. This is the ideal application that we'd like to see before us. It has everything going for it. I'm urging you to partner with Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund, Green Acres, with my organization, with Tenefly Nature Association, with the Sierra Club. There's money. We had a 2009 settlement with the water company. It's earning interest ever since then. It's over a million dollars. There are other entities that are willing to also supplement that, private people. You've heard the most passionate discussions tonight, arguing in favor of keeping this place. It is a gem. It's gorgeous. It's just five point five acres, but it is so much more significant than that. It's not just about it, it's about the direction that all of these communities go in. Why haven't we learned what we should not do? Please, I'm tired. I'm exhausted. I've worked so hard for so many years. Help me out here. We know that watershed buffers are good for us. We know we should protect our wetlands. We know that trees offer so many incredibly valuable services. We know by taking them down, we do a disaster to the surrounding area. You can't re-engineer back the services that nature provides. You can manage, but you can't.
Thank you. Lirinda Marsh.
I'll pass now, thank you.
You swear or affirm that the testimony will give this proceeding to its due self?
I do.
For the record, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Sure. Kirk Carpenter, at 168 Central Avenue, Old Pan.
Thank you.
So, speaking late in the, in the proceedings, I wanted to echo what everyone has said. First off, to thank everyone for their extensive time, many, many months, to listen to the presentation with patience, excellent questions, and your job is so difficult, it's a thankless, literally thankless job, as you have understood from lots of different angles. But that said, it's also, you know how incredibly important a role, and a vital role that you play in shaping the direction and character of this town. You've heard lots of people speak about their ties to the town, and history, and so on and so forth. And shot through all of that is, I understand, trying to balance intelligently and creatively the desire for forward progress and transformation, while still preserving the inherent character and the beauty, and that's in sort of air quotes, because it can be interpreted in many ways, both physical, environmental, and just the sort of the, everything about the town, of why Altapan is a, is a draw for people to come here, to live here and raise families. We've seen so much change over the time, over the last several years, the development. And again, I've been to those, those presentations and tried to help make logical arguments for and against projects. For example, when the project for the, across Oak Street, Oaks Park, was being proposed for storage, that didn't make sense for that thing, and I said so. However, when it came up for the senior home, memory care facility, we asked intelligent questions of the applicant, we got our answers, we made changes, and guess what? We got it through, and that was great. It was going to be helpful. Now, that project didn't go through, it's, that lot is, is now available. It wasn't at the beginning, when this application started. People said, "Oh, why can't we just buy that?" Well, that wasn't what this applicant started, right? So that's just the facts. Now, everybody's made greater arguments of why, historical, environmental, operational, all kinds of impact, negative. But if we take the opposite side, if you guys make this decision, right, to actually approve it, all right, why would that be? Is it because of the tax revenue that would comp? Because the Sunrise facility is a very analogous facility, be about $230,000 annual revenue to the town for schools and the town coffers. I don't think that's enough to, to make a compelling argument to make this D1, this use variance, right? Everything is based on the use variance. However, there is a compelling argument, and it hangs over all of us, about the COA and our obligations. Ms. Haveria's incredibly helpful presentation on COA and our obligations for the third round is, is hanging over, it's 2025, I believe she said. We're protected with our, our situation for, until that time, but after that, we'll be on the hook. So we're going to get 10, if you approve this, and because the COA is the driving mechanism for the approval, we're going to get 10 beds out of this. Is 10 enough? Okay, maybe. But if not, and we really want to go all in on COA, can we deny this and say perhaps work with some sort of public-private partnership, where we say, "Let's take more of a model of the, of the Russell Street housing, the senior housing, where we're doing just hardcore, just serious housing, nothing but housing, and that's all, every single one of those is COA. You get the property, I didn't say how, that's operational. If you were able, if you were able to get the property and donate to the county, hands off, that's like 20 to 30 pieces of credits right there." So all I can say is, thank you for your time, consider other options, I know you do, and we love the character as it is. We totally understand that you have this sort of damage hanging over your head. Thank you so much, your time.
I've never been on it.
Thank you. We've concluded the list, a total of 25 speakers. More signed up than several have gone home or elected not to speak. I guess there would be a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're into January, January 11. You're going to have anybody here, and by the way, January 11, there's another hearing also.
And it's also our reorganization.
Pardon me?
It's also our reorganization.
Reorganization, the board.
Yeah.
That won't take too long.
Are you sure about this?
Well, I calculated before coming tonight, and just to see where we are from February 9th, and it's, tonight is day 308 on a 120 statutory.
I assume you're willing to extend the time.
That's what, I mean, we're, we're, I mean, the board asked for additional info from Mr. Steinhegen. I don't know what's going to come, whether I'm going to have to call Dan on the ballot. And correctly reopening the record, you know, poses additional procedural, you know, issues with timing. So we're February 11th, right, so, you know, we're going to have to, you know, make a decision at that point, because we're really, we're over a year.
The other application, residential, that's a subject, two or three with variance.
Yes.
Sorry?
It's not a simple application.
Now I know. Do we do that? Are you ready?
He's already, he's already, yeah. But we can't be, as an, an ongoing, to be prior to that application, correct? The new application?
I think she would be first on the agenda. But it would be a cutoff time, because each would have to be split between you and the other applications.
We'll see what happens in the next couple of weeks also, you know, on the other issues, but.
Eventually it has to be.
No, I mean, we're.
They're going to be coming up on the one-year anniversary.
Yeah, I actually filed the application in December of '21, and it was deemed complete. February 9th was the first hearing, so we're way over the statutory period of time. So. the record. So I would still, that January really be a, a good focus on this to wrap things up, because at that point.
If possible, but you know, no guarantee.
Okay, and could that be done in January, do you think?
Let's hope, let's hope we make a lot of progress.
Because I'll ask, I'll ask for availability as well.
Your planner needs to be here to be cross-examined.
Yep.
I thought he was here before.
He was, but when I, I said go ahead, because I knew we had all the public comments to get to.
What is he testifying on?
Well, he's not.
He's not, he needs to be cross-examined.
I forgot about that.
And to that point, to try to wrap this up, the only two real outstanding things for the next meeting are the written engineer's report, so that you guys can respond to it, and that, and then the whatever settlement or agreement you guys are going to try to come to with regards to the drink, which is not our concern. It really isn't, but at the end of the day, it's, it's a concern of mine, we can't use it for this purposes, but I would like to see it resolved, and that.
And I have a summation, just for the record, but, you know, I'll be considering at the time.
Yeah, he knows.
And I'm, and I really submit a legal memo beforehand, just to try, because it's been so long, I think, I'm sitting here tonight, and I've got myself pretty much committed to doing that, just to try, try to bring everything together. And so I'll make sure that I get that over for everybody.
Yeah, you'll give me a copy of that? Copy of that?
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Nope, I don't think so. Anything else?
Can we have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion to open.
Would you just carry on the notice?
There'll be no further notice on this application, it's carried to January 11th.
Okay.
7:00. 7:00 PM.
Special affairs taking on the check item.
Watching two jars.